Good evening, everyone. I'm going to reconvene our open session. Sorry we're a few minutes late. And I'd like to ask trustee Lang to report out actions taken in closed session.
Thank you, President Jamal. On a seven to zero vote, the board approved a general leave of absence without pay from August 21st to December 20th, 2017, for a classified employee at Saddleback College. And that was the action taken in closed session.
Thank you, trustee Lang. And then we'll do the invocation led by me, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by trustee Wright.
So we often, we often take a more solemn note, but today I'm going to take a different tact in doing the invocation. I think it's obvious to most people who follow our district closely that a lot of changes are occurring. Change can be hard and is often resisted. Many of the changes that are occurring involve personnel. Some people have opted to take an early retirement package, some very good people who've contributed greatly to the success of our district, and we appreciate their contributions over the years. But with change comes an opportunity to define or redefine our district for the next several years. We have many challenges facing the district, enrollments, keeping our curriculum relevant, maintaining fiscal prudency, and of course, hiring and keeping the best and brightest. I'm confident we will get it right if all of us, and that includes everyone here at the dais, the board, the chancellor, the administration, the faculty, classified staff, and our community, continue to put the success of students first. If we follow this guiding principle, we will continue to be one of the best community colleges, if not the best, not only in the state, but the entire nation. Thank you.
Follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, trustee Wright. And I see that we have two requests for public comments, and only two? Are there, is that it? Okay. So when I call your name, please come up to the podium to my left and try to keep your comments to two minutes or less. And the first person on the list is Bob Cosgrove.
Thank you, members of the board, administration, guests here. Brenda Borner and I would like to thank the district for proposing the incentive that we have taken and for the board for approving it. And we're delighted, as are our classified colleagues, for their inclusion. We now have a community that is together with our management, who have taken this generous offer. One thing I would like to ask the board to consider is that for future retirees of our classified staff, that they also receive the similar kinds of health benefits that the administrators and the faculty secure. This, of course, is negotiable. And the last point I'd like to make is you have on the agenda the scoreboard or the scorecard for student success at both colleges. The one thing that I have said over the years and wish to say another time is that the hiring of more full-time faculty is the one single thing that will make an impact on our student's success and the success of our colleges. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Jennifer Pacula.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Pacula. Everyone gets my name wrong, it's okay. So I'm co-chair of the OER work group on campus, and I came just to say hello and to answer questions. I know OERs are part of interim president Whitaker's report tonight, and so I just wanted to be here in case there were any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now proceed to board reports. And I forgot where I started last week, but I think I'll start up to my left and go with trustee Witt.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. June was somewhat of a quiet month, although I already reported on the conference that I attended, a leadership conference in Washington DC, and we met with some dignitaries. And it was an absolutely phenomenal experience to be on the hill never that I have been there. And it was great. It was absolutely intriguing, fascinating, but more than anything, they actually listened to us, and I appreciated that. And they actually took notes, and we're doing follow-ups, and I appreciate Terry for keeping that up, and I know that we have made a difference. I did attend the medical assistant graduation a couple of weeks ago, the men and women who graduated. It was great. They received their certificates, and the speeches were, actually, they were, they were so inspiring. They have a consultant who's a physician, and she really set the pace. And then I really appreciated the students and what they had to say. No, they didn't get an AA or they're not going on for their masters or bachelors at this point in time, but what they had to say was from the heart. And while they were speaking, I realized that when you think about our program here in medical assisting, they are actually the first person you meet when you go to a doctor's office. How important is that? So it was, you know, very, very important to me to be there that night. Then I also attended the South Orange County Economic Coalition, the luncheon. It was excellent, phenomenal information. I know other people will share what was offered, and Lisa Bartlett, she gave an excellent presentation of what's going on in Orange County right now. And if anybody's interested, I know the office has, what did they offer, a booklet of all the aspects that, or all the projects that are going, and especially Dana Harbor, that's a big one. All right, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Milchuker.
Okay, thank you. First of all, welcome Denise Whitaker, the new interim president of Saddleback College, the interim president of Saddleback College. And I attended a meet and greet with Denise Whitaker and the board members and some of the administrators, and we got into some nice discussions, and I think she's a welcome addition to Saddleback College now and help us move forward in this important time. I'm looking forward to the professional development week at Saddleback College, which will be starting on the August 14th, at Saddleback and Irvine Valley College. And this is an opportunity for many different presentations to be made from different faculty members and administrators in the college, and we can learn about what's going on at the college and the different opportunities that the college is looking forward to taking advantage of this coming semester in the fall. And along with that, the finalists for the Saddleback College president will be having forums and speaking to the entire Saddleback College community, and we will be looking forward to hearing people's comments on what they feel about these particular individuals, and because it's a pretty important decision to who the next Saddleback College president will be, and this will be an open and very transparent way of looking forward for a college president, and I feel very good about it. So I'm looking forward to that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Lang.
Yes, thank you. I also would like to echo trustee Milchuker's remarks in welcoming acting president Denny Whitaker. It was a pleasure meeting you with many of my colleagues here on the board last Thursday in person, sharing some ideas and learning more about you, and I'm also confident that you will be successful and help pave the way for our new Saddleback College permanent president. Like many of the other trustees, it was fun participating in the 50th anniversary interviews and filming session. This is certainly, this anniversary is a wonderful milestone event for the college and the district, worthy of celebrating and appreciating the hard work on everybody's part in making this district so consistently successful over all these years. And then also in reiterating some of the opening remarks that President Jamal made, I really would like to thank all of those folks that are serving on the different hiring committees, what important work that you are doing for that, for our district, particularly in this time when we are trying to fill so many spots in the district. So thank you very much. And finally, I wanted to give a shout out to Tracy Fahimi out there, who I noticed was interviewed by the Irvine World News and the supplement to the Orange County Register, and just did a terrific job in terms of highlighting the program that she's involved with. So thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Wright.
My report's going to be pretty short. I did not attend a lot of activities the last three weeks, but I did attend the meet and greet and want to welcome Denise Whitaker. I applaud her for some of the remarks that she made. She seems to be very well suited for being the interim president for the next six months, and I wish her the best. We're all here to give her her support, so I want you to know that. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, trustee Wright. So I'm going to, I apologize in advance, I'm probably going to go longer than two minutes, Grace, and to my fellow board members, but I felt like on the occasion of what I received, I want to read a letter that was sent to me by a Saddleback College student, and I was so moved by it that I wanted, I thought about editing it, but I couldn't edit it because I didn't think anything deserved to be edited, so I'm going to read the entire letter that was sent to me last week. Dear President Jamal, my name is Angel Valier, and I'm writing to you to share my experience at Saddleback College. Two years ago, I graduated from Mission Viejo High School. I was a mediocre student, never really taking my academics seriously. Senior year, I was captain of my cross-country and track team. I had a few schools look at me for athletics, but decided to attend Saddleback College because truthfully, I felt confused career-wise and not sure if I wanted to pursue my athletic career any longer. After months of discussing this with my family, I decided to join the cross-country team. My mother was a big influence in this, and she felt I would feel more part of the school if I got involved. I was so fortunate to get two amazing coaches, Coach Matt Sherman and Coach Mark Lethan. I've never had coaches who put such a strong emphasis on academics, and as a team, we were held accountable and grade checks were done every four weeks. The coaches had an open-door policy where we could discuss our progress both academically and athletically. Their motto was academics come first. If you can't perform in the classroom, you won't be able to perform as an athlete. Their goals as our coaches was to get their athletes the best opportunities for our next journey, not only as athletes, but more importantly, as students. Looking back, I see how all of my teammates stayed on track with grades and are going to continue our education. Saddleback gave me the resources to strive in the classroom. The LRC is the best resource as a student athlete. Christina Hinkle does anything in her power to help you get the tutors or help that is needed. There's no goofing around when it comes to getting your work done, and putting in your weekly hours is no joke. I never had issues with professors at Saddleback. The staff and employees are always professional and great. I learned a lot and thrived in the classroom, having the best academic years of my life here at Saddleback. To sum up, my experience at Saddleback was one for the books. After two years of being scholar-baller, captain of cross-country and track, I've grown so much, I was a leader, taking my cross-country and track team to high levels as one of the top performers in the state. I was recruited by many universities, USC being one of them. I'm proud to say that I will be attending USC this fall as a student athlete. I attribute a lot of this success to my hard work at Saddleback, but must thank the administration, professors, and my coaches at Saddleback College. I was given all the tools I needed to reach levels I never thought I could reach. Saddleback College was a great route to the new chapter in my life. If I could speak to students considering Saddleback College, I would tell them it is one of the best choices I made coming out of high school. From my experience, I've grown not only as an athlete, but as a student, and most importantly, I'm so thankful I had this great option available to me. I really enjoyed my community college experience, and I would recommend it to anyone looking to further their education out of high school. My best regards, Angel Valier, class of 2017. And I think that pretty much sums up why we all are part of the district. I think she covered just about every, almost every area of what we'd want to see happen at our community college district, and I commend, I know there are similar letters coming from IVC, but I just felt so moved by this letter, I wanted to read it into public record tonight. Thank you.
Trustee J.
I want to welcome you, Denise, and I had a meeting with Denise, and she's just going to be a wonderful acting president. I really enjoyed the meeting with you. I also attended the South Orange County Economic Coalition with Terry Witt, and it was interesting talking about my area, Dana Point, and the harbor, they're going to be redoing a lot of the harbor. But one of the best things I did on the 3rd of July was I met with the director of site development, Mary Opel. She gave me and John Edwards a tour of the ATEP's first new building, which is IVC's first building. Wow. The tour was fantastic, and I recommend it to everyone to get out to ATEP and to see the new facility. It'll just blow you away. It is so wonderful. Mary told us how pleased she was with the builder, and it was a design-build project, and she was exceptionally pleased with the builder, which as a trustee really made me feel good. On Friday the 7th of July, I attended the IVC Foundation Retreat at the Quail Hill Community Center in Irvine. I'd never been out there, and it was a beautiful site and a beautiful area. The new foundation president is Betty Jo Woollett, and we discussed changes for the bylaws. That took a little while. And also presented was the idea of a one-minute message. That was to tell people about the IVC Foundation in one minute, using special words, and not just rambling on, but to do it one minute or two minutes. It was a great idea. Congratulations are in order for the foundation for raising a million dollars this last year. And also, I want to remind you to put on your calendar, the gala for IVC will be March 10th, 2018, and it's going to be at the Turnip Rose.
Thank you, trustee J. Trustee Brenda Guest.
All right. Once again, welcome Denise Whitaker. Did not get to make the meet and greet, met you today, and so I'll just trust that everyone else is right. Good for us. I did attend today, this, for lunch, the ACCOC, which is a coordinating council for Association of Cities in Orange County. They've invited me to be part of the economic, I'm sorry, the environmental and energy committee as a representative for the district, and they, we've been meeting now for about three years and made a lot of progress on collectively coming up with things for cities to share, but also making sure that the school districts are aware of things that are going on, and I've shared some of those in the past. Today, they went over, got a presentation from a group called STEM, not related to the educational STEM, it's just their name, and they provide battery storage for electricity and show how there's a new movement in the state to make that affordable in many sense free, to get it started, and then show the energy savings. They do the maintenance and the monitoring and all of that. You can do it per building. It's basically wherever you have a meter, you can put in these batteries, so you can do it as a site, if you have a central meter, or you can do it at buildings and so forth. So I passed that information on to Brandy and Delana, so we're going to see if they can find anything there. Also, Energize Coalition is a new thing as well, coming down from the state, where before they were coordinating each county, so there was Connect OC was connecting all the cities in Orange County to share what they're doing with clean energy, either ideas they have or what ideas other cities are doing. Now they're going out to the county level. And so we're in a coalition now with LA, San Bernardino, and so forth. And so I pass that information on as well, so we can get ideas for clean energy as well as share ideas.
Thank you.
And I am checking in, and I have to leave at eight.
All right. Student trustee Larson.
Yes, thank you. I would like to first welcome the new interim president of Saddleback. A pleasure to see you in the seat. I did attend last night the Shakespeare in the Park at Saddleback. There were several hundred attendees. I was very surprised, and I do believe that it's a great way for the college to reach out to the local community. So I think it's a great idea to have that, you know, continue in the future. I also did attend the medical assistant graduation, and I was reminded that I, there is a good chance that I will need to give a speech when I go to these events. So I'm definitely, definitely going to brush up on my impromptu speech skills. But I did, after talking with the directors and so forth, Susan White, Dr. Donna Raines Sostak, Diane Pestalosi, and Ms. Columbo, after speaking with them, I realized just the passion that they have for Saddleback and the students, and they're highly qualified individuals who can, you know, make plenty of money in their fields, and they choose to be at Saddleback. So I do want to applaud the administrators who hired these individuals. And that's the end. Thank you.
Thank you. Chancellor's report.
Good evening. Welcome, Denny Whitaker. We really appreciate having you here. So this is your first board meeting, so welcome. Just a couple announcements. We have an acting vice chancellor of human resources that's going to begin next Wednesday. Her name is Diane Clarow, and so we're looking forward to her coming. We have a permanent vice chancellor of human resources search underway and expect to have somebody appointed probably by October. So we're looking forward to having some assistance in the acting chancellor, vice chancellor role, so we're really appreciating that. We also have another new acting chancellor coming on board for business services. So Kim McCord, I want to thank you for serving in the acting vice chancellor role, and so Kim will be in the role through August 1st, and then after that, it'll be a person named Jim Bice, and he has 45 years of experience, having served as a vice chancellor of business services at Riverside Community College District, so he's worked in a multi-college district before, and very good. So you're going to find both these persons very good to work with, so I think the colleges will be very pleased with both of those persons in those roles, so I wanted to let you know that those are coming. In addition to that, we have two presentations this evening. We have two 10-minute presentations this evening. The first one is a student's scorecard presentation, and we have our institutional research folks, and I think possibly Jim Vanna maybe presenting on that one? No, that's on the other one. Okay. So we have that coming, and it's really interesting information, so I'm looking forward to that. As well is Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College both presenting on the pathway initiatives. And there's multiple initiatives happening in regards to pathways, and it's a little bit confusing like how they all work and which, what's each one is doing. So it's going to be really helpful to the board to understand what's happening with student pathway initiatives of both of the colleges. So we have that presentation tonight, too. And then I just have to say to trustee Lang, he has such good choice in ties. He's wearing a Pittsburgh Penguin tie tonight, and I have to say, it's one of my best and favorite teams, so good choice on tie wear.
That's your opinion.
You're going to get so much duck wear.
All right. We now have our college presidents' reports. Irvine Valley College.
Well, thank you very much. Welcome, President Whitaker, and she's been here, I believe, 10 days, and we've met four times already and had very, very substantial meetings that I thought were really very good. Well, at this time of the summer, we're concentrating on landing the budget, and the team is doing an excellent job at bringing that in and also working on our schedule, getting prepared for fall. Enrollments are going quite well for us, and we're seeing our productivity go up, which is a good thing. We're also involved in planning, so during the summer, we have a number of planning meetings, and trustee J mentioned the foundation. And this is where we did a number of things, but going through the bylaws can be an arduous process, but we got through it just fine, and it was a good, good meeting. But also in strategic planning, strategic planning and accreditation meeting, we concentrated on how to pull the guided pathways concept into our plan, and, which we did so successfully, so that was good. And tomorrow morning, going to catch an airplane, as a member of AACC President's Academy Executive Committee, going to New York, we're going to provide professional development for 60 college presidents across the nation. And so this is something that I've done, this will be my fourth year in a row, so catch an early plane and go off and work over there for a little bit. Thanks.
Thank you. And because I filibustered over my own time, I'll congratulate you, Denny Whitaker, for being appointed, and we'll look forward to working with you and your report.
Okay, I'm on.
You're on.
Thank you. I'd like to share my appreciation to the chancellor and to the board for appointing me to this position and having confidence in me to assist the college in a smooth transition in preparation for the appointment of the permanent position. I know it's going to be a short duration, but I am optimistic that we will work together to make changes and improvements in areas that will help the new president be able to move forward in areas that he or she won't have to worry about because we managed to get it accomplished this fall. Well, it is, it is day 10, as Glenn has stated, and in that time period, I've had over 25 meetings in nine days and have met over 220 people, of which I cannot repeat all their names. I say to people, if you know I've met you, just tell me I've met you and then repeat your name. I'm trying very hard to stay on top of the names of those that I have met. But in that process of 10 days, I have, I have narrowed the process for identifying projects to work on, which includes enrollment management and FTS and data review, program review, evaluation, and so I hope to, to help the campus in streamlining some of those ideas and plans for the future. We are moving into OpenStax, which is an OER, and OER are not known very well for their, for what it's about, but it's, it's a concept of basically participating in an opportunity for open educational resources, which means the textbook industry is going to change over the next few years. And at the colleges that I have been participating in where we've used OERs, it is a dramatic change once it gets going in how accessible textbooks and resources can be available to students at a much lower cost. Right now, most textbooks cost more than what the cost of education is, and so we really have to look at how expensive it may not be, as expensive to take 12 credits, but when you add the textbooks on to it, it gets very expensive, so I'm very excited about that new program. And I think outside of that, we, the cosmetology program has been selected by this, the same group that identified Saddleback College previously, thebestcolleges.org, as having the number 14 college in cosmetology, and that is quite an honor to have, and I'm very pleased to announce that, and I think you have that press release in your packet. And with that, thank you very much.
Thank you, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Even though you went over on your first report.
I was hoping there might be latitude.
I have four and a half years of compliance, but we'll, we'll let it slide. Student, associated student government, Saddleback College, or IVC, it doesn't matter.
I'll go ahead. Good evening. This past month has been a bit calmer as opposed to the previous month, but we've continued meeting with IVC. We're going to have part of our retreat together, and we've been working on how we can collaborate this year and work more closely together. We had our first board of directors meeting last week, in which we are really finalizing the budget for the upcoming year, so that's been pretty insightful, making a lot of decisions. As a issue, we attended the Shrek the Musical in Concert Performance, which is part of the Saddleback Summer of Theater and Music Series out in the quad for free. There was a big turnout, similar to what I hear the Shakespeare in the Park was, so I'm hoping that the department will be able to continue to put those on next year. In addition, last week, I attended the veterans barbecue event, so it was great to meet student veterans and talk about how we can work next year to support our student veterans. And I'd just like to add, I took a class last semester that used the OER resource, and it was very great. I was able to access my textbook so long as I had my computer, my phone, so I hope that that could be implemented more into the education. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. ASG IVC.
Hello, hello. Am I good? Okay. Hello, hello, and good evening, everyone. First, I'd also like to welcome President Whitaker to, to here. Welcome aboard. For myself, I've attended Irvine Valley College's Strategic Planning and Accreditation Committee Retreat, and also Irvine Valley College's Foundation Board Retreat. As a student, it was incredibly insightful for me. Or it was incredibly insightful for me, and it gave me a better understanding on how strategic planning works, and also how the process, how it gives me a better understanding of the processes, processes behind the board of governors. Overall, it was a great learning experience for me. So I hope to, I look forward to continuing to, the retreat, looking, look forward to continuing to attend more retreats already. ASG of IVC has also begun their summer interviews for the remaining positions for the government as of July 3rd. They will go until July 20th, and interviews will be conducted the following days afterwards, and deliberation should be, should be concluded next week, the week after. And so we, I also have continued having weekly meetings with my advisor, and we have conducted a draft, a dra, a draft agenda for both my executive retreats for my executive officers and my agenda, or the agenda for the returning officers as well. So that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. Now going to move into our discussion items, the first of which, oh, sorry, excuse me. Do we have any board requests for reports? We do not. Now we're moving into our discussion items. I think we're going to start with 4.1, Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College Student Success for Scoreboard. That doesn't sound correct, but the Student Success Scoreboard.
Or Scorecard.
Scorecard.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Denise Insang. I'm the District Director of Research, Planning, and Data Management. And we'll be presenting on the Student Success Scorecard. And I have with me Dr. Jennifer Klein from Saddleback College and Dr. Loris Fagioli from Irvine Valley College, both directors of research planning and accreditation. So just as a quick summary, we know we have 10 minutes, so it's a lot of data we typically go through. But as you remember, this is based on the AB 1417 Accountability Reporting for Community Colleges. And we're going to focus on the metrics in the scorecard. The organization of the scorecard has changed a little bit, but basically there are three areas that, that we're watching progress on. This is completion. And under completion, we have persistence, 30-unit completion, and completion of degrees, certificate, and transfer. Under basic skills, we look at remedial progress from moving from basic skills courses to transfer level courses. There's a new metric, I'll go over in a, in a short bit, around completion of transfer level. And that's a shorter cohort year. And lastly, career technical education, or CTE, metrics around completion within CTE programs, and Skills Builder, which was a new metric last year, where we looked at wage gains for students who didn't complete a degree or certificate, but, but actually looked like they got a better wage gain in their profession. So real quickly, what I typically do is kind of orient you around the documentation that you have in your agenda. We wanted to highlight that the college profile pages, which are online, are more visually appealing. They, they have a map now. So there's some pie chart pops up, pop-ups on the online form. The grouping of the metrics, as we just went over, they've regrouped them, so they're a little bit easier to understand. And the new metric in basic skills is the transfer level achievement. And so this is the percent of first-time students, or our first-time cohorts, who complete six units in any math or English in the basic skills area, and then complete a transfer level course in English or math. What this is trying to do is get at a shorter-term cohort to look at progression in a more timely fashion, which is, as you know, a lot of our cohorts are six years. We're, we're not getting our results until they're, they're usually not in our, in our institutions. So those are some major changes to the, the scorecard, and you can see that in your packet. So I'm going to turn it over. We're going to flip-flop. I'm going to come back at the end and, and kind of incorporate what we're doing with the metrics. But as we've done before, Loris is going to take several of the metric slides and, and talk about trends, and Jennifer will do the last pieces of the metrics. And then I'll come back and we'll finish up how we're using the scorecard.
I will spend a little bit more time on the first slide and then go through the other ones a little bit more quickly due to time. Here you will see one of those remedial progress rates. And you see at the bottom, you see, you see five cohorts, and the latest cohort that is available is in 2010 and 2011. You see four lines, the golden line representing the average for California, being the Golden State. You see a gray line that we have added since the request from last year from the board, that these are the averages of all community colleges in Orange County. So that is the gray line. The orange line here represents Saddleback College, and the blue line is Irvine Valley College. And you see, at the very end, you actually see the numbers for the last cohort. So the number of 40%, 37%, et cetera, is for the 2010, 2011 cohort. So this is the math remedial progress rate, so the rate of students within six years who achieve a math transfer level outcome. Here you see the same rate for English, and also for ESL. For ESL, you will see, this is one of the few slides where both Saddleback and IVC are below the average of the state as well as Orange County. And we have implemented quite a few changes since then. So this is 2010, so this is quite significantly back in time. We have noticed that there is a lot of students that actually do not necessarily want to achieve at a transfer level. So we have a lot of adult learners, and we have a lot of learners that just want to improve their English skills. So we have implemented in the fall for IVC, we've implemented the adult ESL program. And similarly for Saddleback, so we'll expect these rates to jump quite dramatically up because it will not include those students that are not interested in actually achieving a transfer level outcome. Here are the two new metrics. And because of a lot of, the drawback of the scorecard is because the six-year cohorts, it's very difficult to see the progress that has been done in more recent initiatives. And you will see here, this is a one-year rate. So how many students achieve within one year the math transfer level achievement? And so this is a new and exciting metric, and we're expecting this to actually quite dramatically increase for both IVC and Saddleback. We have several initiatives, such as the Multiple Measure Placement Initiative, Acceleration, the Core requisites. Those will dramatically increase the rates that you will see here. Similarly, also for English transfer level achievement, this is the new one-year metric. You see at the bottom, this is actually the 2014, 15 cohort. So this is much more recent than the six-year cohorts.
Next, we have overall persistence rates. And as a reminder, persistence rate is defined as the percentage of degree or transfer-seeking students who enroll in three primary consecutive terms. Basically, this is showing you how much students have determination and grit to get through the three primary terms and continue on with their academic trajectory. So for this indicator, the region is actually slightly above both colleges. But overall, we see a nice modest increase over time. And if you actually turn this into a compound annualized growth rate, you'd see that basically for Saddleback, it's about a 0.5% increase year to year. And for IVC, some nice growth at about 2.8% every year. So drilling into this, we wondered what is going on. And actually, what we found is there's a little bit of some demographic findings in that for IVC, actually, unprepared Asian students actually have higher persistence rates than prepared, all of the other prepared students. And actually, we found the same thing at Saddleback. So, and then next, we have the overall 30-units rate. And this is defined as the percent of students who took at least six units, who attempted any math or English in the first three years, and who completed 30 units within six years. Generally, we see that IVC is performing slightly above the OC region in Saddleback, while Saddleback is on par with the region. Both colleges are performing above the state. Looking over the last five years of data, we see modest gains for both colleges. But the key takeaway is that progress is pretty slow. And when we look at some of the data, when we really drilled in, we actually found that at IVC, there's, the 18- to 24-year-old population actually has a higher rate here, and that's what's lifting up IVC a little bit. So work to be done. All right. Next, the cornerstone indicator here, overall completion rate. This is the percent of students who attempt, oh, excuse me, who've earned six units and who attempt any math or English in their first three years that achieve a certificate, degree, or transfer, or get transfer-prepared. All right. So as we look at this, it looks relatively flat, right, over the last five years. But let me just tell you a little story. When we drill into the data, we actually start to see some shifts. Basically, we find that our students who are prepared for college, meaning they start out and not at basic skills level, are actually basically finishing with accumulating lower units over time. However, our students who are starting out at basic skills are increasing their median number of units to complete, and they're not banking toward their transferable credits. What that means is, in 2006, 2007, that cohort's median number of units that were non-transferable for basic skills was 15. And in 2010, 2011, now we have our developmental ed students actually have an overage of 17 non-transferable credits that they bank to their cumulative total. And so we really need to solve this problem, and you'll actually hear more about how we're going to try to solve this problem with guided pathways next. So the CTE completion rate, we're hovering a little bit above 50% here. And this is the percentage of students who basically take about eight units in a CTE program and who finish a degree or certificate. Here, we really see that this is a problem for the state. And basically, this is why, the next slide you'll see is the Skills Builder. The state's response to this low completion rate is that our students are actually here to gain a specific skill so they can go ahead and go out into the workforce really quick and get the job that they, that they want, and the wage gains that they want. So the state came out with the Skills Builder rate, which is basically a student who takes any CTE class that's basically deemed as occupationally focused, and then tracks those students and sees if they had a median wage gain increase. And what we can see here is that we're actually below the state, but last year, we were way above the state. So what's going on? Well, we've had a huge initiative through this thing called Launch Board. And basically, the state is asking us to all have our CTE students put, get data into the system so that we can track their wage gains. More and more colleges are participating, and so now the state's number is going to fluctuate a little bit. So the jury's out. Let's wait a little bit longer and see where we sit with the Skills Builder rate. Oh, and then the next is the top 10 Skills Builder disciplines. So here, we see the areas where students are in our CTE programs, and they're taking just a course before they can go off to the work world and see if they can get some wage gain increase. What we see here, if you look across the two colleges, is there's some nice synergy showing you where there's some area of demand. Specifically, we see that both colleges really have real estate, child development, so on and so forth. And so there's something that we can learn from this, especially as we attend things like our regional forecasts. And so much more to do here as well. So our overall assessment is that Irvine Valley College outperforms the statewide average on six out of the eight measures, including completion rate. Saddleback outperformed statewide average on seven out of the eight measures, including the completion rate. But our overall assessment is that many of these metrics are actually flat over time. We also recognize that these are lagging indicators. And so for the first, Chancellor Oakley's call to focus on multiple measures, remedial education reform, and guided pathways are all attempts to raise our completion rates. And basically, we are there. We're getting there. And many of our efforts in the last two to three years, highlighting acceleration, common assessment, multiple measures, Triple SP, guided pathways, were expected to lift the short-term metrics over time.
So we sent, gave you a lot of data, and typically, our last slide before questions and discussion is, how are we using the data? And in the past, we've shown you our strategic plan, and we've used the completion metrics as a key performance indicator on how we're doing around student success. But we wanted to also introduce you to something that we'll be highlighting when we bring back our strategic plan to the board, is that the state chancellor's office has also created an institutional effectiveness goal-setting requirement for all community colleges. So you have the background. It's based on Senate Bill 860. And it's also contingent, we need to set goals in order to receive Triple SP, Student Success and Support Services Program funding. So we wanted to make sure you had that in the background as well. There are four required areas, as you see, student performance, where they're requiring us to set goals around completion, and another goal around basic skills. They're looking at, are we accredited? We just went through our site visit, so how are you doing in accreditation? There's even fiscal viability metrics in that. And all of these have goal settings between one and six years. So the indication is, the chancellor's office has had this metrics for, gosh, let's see, 13 years now? And, and we've never been asked to set goals around them. But the state chancellor's office is doing that. We're also doing it locally. So just wanted to give you that, that feedback and kind of that context for, for these metrics. So with that, we'll take any questions you have.
Thank you for your presentation, all, all three of you. Thank you very much. Trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, I just want to clarify something because it, I don't know. The ESL comparison, you indicated that we're disaggregating the cohort with an effort to have, does that make us now apples to apples to those areas that were above us? Or is it just nice and convenient to be able to take a group out to make our data look better? I, I mean, it concerns me. I really, I mean, if those groups were doing higher than us because they're doing a better job, is, isn't it more important to try and do a better job than to take? You understand what I'm saying? I just want to make sure that we're not just making ourselves look better fictitiously.
Absolutely. No, this actually comes from the day-to-day experiences that ESL teachers has as, have as well. So the ESL faculty have commented that we have a lot of these students that come into our classes that we have to evaluate. And with the scorecard data, they said it's unfair to pull them into the same cohort. And the initial response, so actually, last year, we've done an ESL survey for all the students of what their goals are, what do they need, what are they expecting out of an ESL program? And there was an overwhelming response of those students that is reflected in the scorecard that they say, no, we are not interested in going to transfer level. We are much more interested in, in a non-credit program. And since we have implemented this in the fall for IVC, there has been a tremendous response, both from students and in terms of enrollment. So I agree that once we have an actual true reflection of students who actually want to transfer, that's a much better statistic. And no matter where we fall, if it's below or above the state, I think primarily it was a student need that we needed to create this adult ESL program. And then we can, I think, evaluate if that is an apples-to-apples comparison. I do know that other colleges, and several other colleges where IVC has gone out to see and get their experience, I know other colleges already have these adult non-credit ESL programs. So I think it will be more of an apple-to-apple comparison.
Okay. Because that's, that kind of, I was hoping for that last part there, is, is the state going to cry foul that we manipulated our data? Or is there any danger of us not truly reporting what the state is looking for? And then any other college crying foul that, hey, they cheated on their data report? That, that was my key question there.
And I'll just add, one of the populations we aren't reflecting here is our non-credit population. And so we've been on state, I've been on state chancellor's office groups where they're looking at a non-credit metric, because we know that we serve a lot of that population that are mixed into what we call our degree-seeking that are mixed into what we call our degree-seeking or our transfer-seeking population. So, they're looking to try to identify how we can measure progress in that group as well.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Lang.
Yes, I thi- I think one of the comments, I think, that you had made earlier was that because we're seeing these lagging indicators, which I take to mean, a lot of this was in timeframes that were five years ago. So, I'm trying to figure out how relevant is that now, all of that past data, and why we can't get more current information to really give us a better picture of, you know, what kind of progress that we are making? And I guess the other, you know, observation that I would have is, is that I, I guess I'm a little disappointed in how we're, at least during the timeframe that you were depicting, how we're stacking up against the other Orange County community colleges, and why they seem to be doing a better job in some of these areas than we are. So, comments?
For the lagging indicator piece, you're, you're right on, it's, it's difficult. However, if you did a distribution of the time to degree, to totally clip that distribution, or get the entire distribution, you actually have to wait about six years. I mean, there's little tiny tails on both sides, right? But the reason why the state did that is to try to capture as many students as possible, and so it spans out six years. The reality is, our students all take six years to graduate. So, the state is coming out with three-year cohorts, but that doesn't mean that we can't institutionally define our own graduation rate at whatever, you know, completion time period we want. So, for example, if we want to say, we want to see how many students finish in two years, which seems pretty relevant to me, we could absolutely do that and have a college-wide graduation rate. It doesn't have to be on the scorecard, and we would be more than willing to show you that every year. It's very timely and relevant, especially with respect to things like scorecards. So, totally open to it. And as far as performance against other colleges in the area, Loris did a great job and made sure to exclude ourselves out of the average, by the way, and there was no massaging or anything like that, there was no, you know, calculated benchmarking and selecting only some of the colleges. We did everything, you know, by address and zip code, are you in OC? And so, that's what you see, and we, we need to use this to kind of dive a little bit deeper.
Thank you, Trustee Lang, thank you for your answers. We're now going to move on to four point two, is it the same trio, or new trio?
You get Jim Gaston.
Jim Gaston.
Yeah.
So, we have the Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College Pathways Initiative.
Hi, good evening, I'm Tracy Fahimi, the Dean of Social and Behavioral Sciences and Academic Programs at Irvine Valley College, and I'm here with Karima Feldhus, Interim Assistant Vice President for Institutional Effectiveness at Saddleback, Rena Wolzinger, Pathways and Dual Enrollment, Dean at Saddleback, and Jim Gaston, Director of IT, focusing on academic services. And we're here to talk about, let's see, yeah, I think we need to adjust and get our PowerPoint up. Oh, there we go, thank you. Perfect. So, what we're going to be doing is giving you an overview of what the pathways initiatives are in our district, and distinguishing some of the more boutique pathways that you may have heard of from guided pathways, which is a very large institution-wide initiative that both colleges are involved with. The pathways model was, the guided pathways model, was developed between the year two thousand and the present through a number of nationwide initiatives funded partly by the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, nationwide, focusing on completion. And why do students start a, a career at community college or at four-year universities, and why do they not reach their goals? And the data have shown that certain sorts of modeling work institution-wide to help students get on a path and stay on a path and succeed. And over ten to fifteen years of research, the guided pathways model has emerged. Now, we do other pathways in our colleges, you may have heard of the Early College Pathway. Recently, you might have read in the Orange County Register about a weekend pathway to a business degree. We have different kinds of career and technical education pathways. These are all wonderful pathways and guideposts to students to achieve some very specific goals. The difference between those programs, which one could call more boutique programs, is that they focus on very small cohorts of students. And the guided pathways model is an institution-wide approach that completely changes the way the entire institution looks at most of our students who enter. The sixty percent who are not right at the top and not right at the bottom, but who are in the middle, and might churn, and they might make poor choices, and they might be confused about what direction they need to go. And it gives them much more intervention, interventionist counseling, and a number of things that Karima will be explaining in a few moments, to get students on a path and keep them on a path. So, the, that is what both colleges are involved with. The letter from a student, read by Tim Jemal, is a perfect example of what guided pathways does. One of the most successful types of cohorts nationwide are student athletes. They do very well at getting through programs on time. And the reason they do is because of what that student described in the letter. They have interventionist counseling, they have people caring very much about whether they are on a path, monitoring their progress on a path, looking at what they're doing. What the guided pathways approach does is it takes that model that's successful in athletics and successful in career technical education, and successful in the early college program, and successful in the gap four, and a number of these boutique programs, and blows that to a very high-level institution-wide. It is an institution-wide transformation where we treat the majority of our students that way coming in, helping them stay on their path and complete in a reasonable amount of time. I'm going to turn it over to Karima, and she's going to be discussing some of the features of a guided pathways model that we're implementing at both colleges.
Good evening, and happy International or National Emoji Day. I learned that this morning, but I, we left on your desk a little, it's not an emoji, but it's, it's a toy, it's the four pillars of guided pathways, yes. So, I'll be talking about that. Several years ago, at IVC, we had Darla Cooper from the RP Group come and present on the Six Factors of Student Success. Those factors, it was a study, it's published, it is important because it tells us what makes students successful. Students are successful when they're directed, when they're focused, when they're nurtured, when they're engaged, when they're connected and valued. So, guided pathways were created around these six students of success, and actually, I met, I saw Darla Cooper, the Curriculum Institute, this past week, and she directed me to her, to their website, where they actually created a crosswalk between guided pathways and the Six Factors of Student Success. So, the California Guided Pathways Project has adopted these four key pillars for implementations, and you have the pillars, and I'm going to go over each one. The clarity, or clarify the path for students, is directed and focused. That is, instead of having a hundred and fifty choices in our websites or in CCC Apply, students will have only five, seven, or nine, what we call meta-majors to choose from. That's what we mean by clarifying the paths. There are too many choices for students, and they're lost. And some call them meta-majors, others call them buckets, other, and I'm going to, by the way, go to the next slide where you see meta-majors, and some call them clusters, pathways, they come under different names. So, what we call them is not important, and the colleges are still in discussions, both IVC and Saddleback, as to what to, what to call them. The second important pillar is help students choose and enter a pathway. We want students to be on time and on plan, get them in, get them their courses, the credits they need, and get them to transfer or find a job. And actually, it's not a choice of transfer or job. Even those who go on to get a PhD will need eventually a job. I know when I came as an international student, from the beginning, I, I knew what I wanted and what jobs. When I got to choose a PhD, or an EDD, or linguistics, or instruction, curriculum and instruction, I actually sat down with an advisor and I told him, what would get me a job? That was years and years early. So, it doesn't matter, we need to help students transfer and find jobs eventually. The, so, the what and how are very important under number two pillar, number two, to help students choose and enter a path. So, we need to be clear with them as to what courses to take, and how much it costs, and how long it takes. Those, those are important questions to, to answer, and guided pathways will help us do just that. The third pillar helps, helps students stay on the path. So, we get them in, we help them, but we also want to offer them all the tools and supports to keep them on the path. At, at Saddleback College, we have what we call Progress Report, that faculty can use to monitor students' progress. Counselors use that as well. I know when I was at IVC, we were working on Early Alert, and if I remember correctly, it was called EZ. So, that, that's an example of a tool that will help students stay on the path. Effective remediation, the, the English faculty are working diligently to improve our courses and programs for students, and you'll hear later the talk on accelerated English and corequisits. Strong advising as well, tracking students, and I spoke about that. Number four, pillar four, it's ensuring that learning is happening with intentional outcomes, and that's what we do through student learning outcomes. Faculty design program improvements based on SLO data and document those changes in, in their program reviews. As you see, faculty roles is very important in, in the four pillars, whether it's mapping out courses and programs, whether it's discussing their student learning outcomes, or reviewing programs, their role is important, and it's not just counselors, but also disciplined faculty, and you'll hear more about that. So, in short, we need to redesign our framework and change the way we think, because students are taking too much time, they're taking too many credits, they're spending too much money, and not graduating. We need to start with the end in mind. I've heard Chancellor Eloy Oakley at several meetings the last few months saying, we spent millions and millions of dollars, and the needle hasn't moved, it's time to think differently. With that, I'd like to introduce again Dr. Rena Wolzinger, she's our new Dean of Career Pathways and Dual Enrollment. Thank you.
So, it's nice to be at my first board meeting here, so, thank you very much. The guided pathways, we heard about the scorecard, and, and you can see that chancellor's office is quickly moving to an age of accountability, it's changing really fast. I was one of the designers of the launch board, and so, it's nice to see, I'm here, how we're going to be hopefully changing the way our outcomes look here at, at the district. And one of the things I'm going to be doing is helping with facilitated learning, and that's what the chancellor's office is calling guided pathways, is how to facilitate a transformational change across your college and across your district. So, this slide shows some of the things we're going to be doing, and it really is faculty-focused, is meeting with disciplined faculty, going over the way that, that we can provide a guided path for what courses to take, with enough choice for, for exploration as well, and, and so that students can explore and still finish their education in a much shorter amount of time. That's what the chancellor has asked us to do in all the colleges. In fact, it's, it's not just the colleges in California, but it's the entire country. This is an AACC mandate that's been working, and so, we're happy to join that effort. So, we'll be leading, or joining the faculty in that effort and working on facilitating those discussions. We'll be working with IT, that Jim's going to talk about in a bit, on technology. We already are ahead of most colleges here in the county with the way that technology is with our, with our systems here, and we've been meeting on the way to integrate that with guided pathways. The chancellor's office, as well as implementing a guided pathways tool, that's more of a, I guess, economic indicator on how we're moving the needle, and we'll have something more specific here that we'll talk about in a minute. We're also working on how to really change the outcomes, and mostly, that's looking at enrollments and outcomes. Those would be transfers or completion of a career certificate. And then, we'll be looking at integrating with counseling a great deal, and, and outreach to both let the students know how they're doing and when they need intervention, that's a real big change. So, Chancellor Oakley has been talking all over the state about guided pathways, and one of the things that changed that wasn't a big announcement last week was at the chancellor's office, there was a reorganization, and that really speaks to what's going on. They reorganized the data, the TRIST Division of the chancellor's office, under Economic and Workforce Development. And what that tells us is, the things that we're doing with technology and data are really important. We're expected now to show accountability, following the state of Texas, that they were the leader in that about, for the last four years, and now, we're expected to do the same. So, we've put a lot of money, and then the chancellor's office has given us a chance to braid these different, different initiatives. And so, guided pathways puts all of those things together for this transformational change.
All right, I'm going to address why the two colleges are on board with this. I mean, we've been on board with it since before the governor's big announcement, and that is because of the metrics that show that many of our students are not completing and persisting as we would like to see. You've seen some of those in the previous slideshow, and up above here, the numbers for IVC, I'll start with, but the Saddleback numbers are almost identical. About nineteen to twenty percentage, that's the percentage of our students who are undecided. It is the undecided student who will benefit from a pathways program the most. There's also a twenty-five percentage point completion gap between prepared and unprepared students. The counseling, the interventions that are system-wide and part of the guided pathways programs can help close that completion gap. Ninety-five is the percentage of students who do not transfer in two years, we're a two-year college. And we would like to increase the number of students who successfully transfer. Most of our students do want to transfer through their expressed academic planning, our goals, about two-thirds of our students seek transfer, but ninety-five percent of our students do not transfer. Forty-three is the percentage of students who do not transfer in six years. So, we have students that are lingering, churning, perhaps making poor choices, maybe lingering for good reasons, but not all of them are, and we want to help the ones that need guidance. One of the great things about guided pathways is that it has the ability to weave together and link programs that have tried to move the needle on these things, but done so separately and in a somewhat siloed fashion. These would be programs like Triple SP, Student Equity, Basic Skills Transformation, the Strong Workforce Program, and the California College Promise. All of the, these programs have the ability to work in tandem under the umbrella of guided pathways. There is an opportunity for guided pathways to, in a systematic way, weave these together toward common goals. And I think that then, the needle, as they say, will be moving in the next three to five years, once the guided pathways process is implemented. You'll see, the next slide, the Saddleback numbers, which are almost the same as the IVC numbers. The whole point of pathways is that if we focus on the entire student pathway, from the moment that student looks at our institutions and considers entering, help them get onto a path, watch them while they're on the path, help them make sure they can stay on that path, and monitor student learning outcomes along that path, then they will, we will improve these numbers, and more students will reach their goals in a more timely fashion. I'm going to talk a little bit about what we're doing at IVC, and then I will turn it over to Dr. Wolzinger to continue on what Saddleback College is specifically doing. Irvine Valley College has been involved with the AACC Pathways Initiative. We've attended five pathways institutes, there is a sixth and last one coming up this fall. We've sent teams of about six people to each of these institutes. The institutes are a process of intensive learning about how to implement the pathways program. We've also attended the IEPI Guided Pathways Training with Saddleback College. We are partnering in the California Guided Pathways Initiative with the two other California AACC Pathways Colleges, Bakersfield College and Mount San Antonio College. At IVC, we are in the process of developing meta-majors and honing them. We are, we've already practiced and are implementing acceleration in English, we are piloting corequisits in English, we are working on multiple measures and implementing them, and this coming year, we're going to be starting the process of mapping pathways. All of this is with work groups, with intensive faculty involvement. All of this is with work groups, with intensive faculty involvement, and institution-wide cooperation. Going to turn it over to Dr. Wolzinger to talk about what's going on at Saddleback.
So one of the things that's exciting is our high schools are excited about pathways, and they really understand it in terms of helping students be ready for college. And so it's been exciting to meet with our high school partners, and one of the things we're going to be doing is stepping up dual enrollment, which is an FTES generating student success exercise that we'll be doing, and that's something that is really going to be new for Saddleback as far as the CCAB dual enrollment agreements. We'll be doing that. We have several areas that we're looking at with the faculty on that. We're also aligning, because we know that the data is heavy with the Chancellor's office, we're aligning our various codes at Saddleback so that our information, our data, will look proper in the launch board, and that's how they're judging our outcomes. We're also working, the things that Tracy mentioned, we're doing as well with math and English and multiple measures is a big thing that we're looking at in our math programs at Saddleback as well. And finally, we'll be attending the various board meetings this year with our high schools to implement the new changes in our portfolio for early college credit.
All right. To wrap up this slide, the next steps in both of our colleges are more professional development surrounding guided pathways, working with technology, which Jim will briefly explain in a few moments, increasing partnerships with high schools, cooperating between the two colleges, and communicating marketing our plans for guided pathways so that both faculty and people at the college, as well as eventually students, understand what we're doing. Jim?
Can I ask you to pause for a second? Do you want to ask your question now?
No.
Okay. Go ahead.
District IT, we're really excited to be able to support the colleges in this. I was told they had 60 seconds to tell you how excited we are, so this is going to be just the highlights. The first is MAP, our academic planning tool. Recently, we added the ability for counselors to create templates, so when a student creates a plan, it automatically gets loaded with a set of courses. In the coming year, we're going to give the counselors the ability to put those in a sequence. So if there's a prescribed sequence of courses, that'll all be done automatically for the student when they create the plan itself. The second one is SMART Schedule. This is currently under development. We're going to be delivering this by the end of the calendar year. Students will be able to go in and block out the times they're not available to take classes. They'll be able to mark the times they would prefer to take classes. It'll be fully integrated with MAP, and it'll essentially guide the student to the specific section so that they can fulfill their academic goals. And then lastly, this was just funded in the recent basic aid funding, is the SHIRPA Student Success Roadmap. This is essentially what it's going to do. It's going to guide a student step by step from the process, all the way from application all the way through completion, either a local degree or certificate, or transferring out to a university. And the intent there isn't to focus just on the selection of courses, because we know there are a lot of factors that go into student success, particularly campus engagement. So we want to guide a student through that entire process and help them be successful. So those are a few things that we've done and that we have planned coming up. And with that, we will take any questions.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. Trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, thank you for that. I've been waiting for this presentation for a while. Having attended the first AACC Pathways Conference, I'm just curious, first of all, I'm really excited about the tie-in here to the other presentation, that this will help our completion rates and so forth, and that's a very positive aspect of this. But one of the things we experienced at that first thing, and you just bear, in your 60-second excitement, just finally touched on it, this idea of helping the student from application to completion. We were given the task to kind of map out what we were going to do from application to completion as an activity, and I just asked a simple question, has anybody tried to apply to IVC or Saddleback, and what's that like? And it hung us up, and the community college, the state site for the application, it's a nightmare. The questions aren't clear as what they're asking the student for, and there was a point where I was like, if I was a student or a parent helping, I would have given up. It shouldn't take me three hours to decipher code. I mean, it was nuts. So I'm really excited to hear that hopefully the state's going to help figure this out in that application process, because from there, I think, what we believed at that time, and it appears to be the case, is that you fix that part, it makes a lot of the other stuff much easier. So maybe speak to what's being done statewide, because I know there's only a few schools in the state that are pilot programs, but obviously with the state chancellor pushing this, they're all going to have to come online at some point, and will use us as models and examples, and that's exciting. So maybe someone wants to speak to that.
So we're fortunate in January to be getting, splitting $150 million for the 114 colleges towards this effort. Exactly to do that, most of that, in the language, it talks about the technology change, and we're quite a bit ahead of other colleges here in the district, so we'll be able to use that money to help with those types of things. One of the, it's somewhat labor-intensive as far as the application until CCC Apply gets fixed as well, but you can tell our website and things like that are not formulated for guided pathways, and since it's a new thing, so those are some of the things we'll have to change as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Wright.
Thank you for your excellent presentation. I have just a couple of questions. Who's going to do all the work for this? I mean, how is the faculty going to be involved, for example?
I think at both colleges, we have the Academic Senate taking a leading role, academic senate presidents, the faculty leaders. I know certainly at IVC, Krima, what's happening at?
For Saddleback College, thank you, Trustee Wright, for asking that question, because faculty role is extremely, extremely important. Tonight, both faculty leaders who are leading guided pathways aren't available, so I'm replacing, we're replacing them. We had a counselor and an English instructor co-chair a faculty inquiry group this past spring. It was announced that the Academic Senate and faculty representing different disciplines and counselors got together several times this past spring just to discuss guided pathways, and we, the college provided copies of the redesigning Community Colleges, America's Community Colleges book that Davis Jenkins co-authored. We gave them each a copy, and we got together and read a chapter, read all four chapters, but each meeting was dedicated to a chapter, and faculty started that dialogue at Saddleback College this past spring.
See, because I remember that at the four-year schools, you were usually assigned, if you're going to major in a certain discipline, you were assigned a faculty member to help you in that discipline. So, and I always thought that would be a good idea, is to get some faculty involved in helping students.
Yeah, at Irvine Valley College, we have a disciplined faculty mentor program, and those are the type of faculty that are going to be very much involved in this as it develops.
The other thing is, what's a meta major?
A meta major is a cluster, it's an interest. It's a broad, it's a cluster of majors representing a career interest that a student may have, a career or transfer interest. So for example, a meta major could be STEM, science.
A science major?
Yes, and maybe a student who says, you know, I have an interest in pursuing like health or science or research or something, I'm not sure what yet. You would put them into a STEM meta major, and then they could take the correct general education early and kind of have some counseling surrounding, defining a more focused path around that. But it's a way of capturing a student at the entry point based on their general interests, and then advising and counseling and helping them hone it down eventually by the time they're in their second semester or second year.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I had a question. I think in the data, you said only 5% of students are transferring within two years at IVC and in Saddleback. Is that, that 5% inclusive of all students who wish to transfer? So 95% of students who wish to transfer in two years are not transferring?
I believe that's correct.
This seems low.
Yeah, that is correct. I'm looking at our research just to make sure I'm correctly interpreting that. Yeah, it's of the students who have expressed an intent to transfer.
Well, it looks like we have some work to do.
Yeah, that seems low, because if you're going to go to, if you know what your major's going to be, you need to do those first two years, prepare for that, so that you can go to a four-year school.
Right. A lot of students, because of the registration system that you've described, they feel pressured to choose a major early that may not even actually be appropriate for them. So they sometimes will turn around or not accept the advice of counseling, sometimes take wrong classes, listen to friends, they do all kinds of things that may, they may not really be on the correct path that early on. What guided pathways will do is help kind of funnel them in, in a more guided way so that they get onto the correct path.
Have we solved the problem in making sure that a student takes English and math that first year instead of putting it off?
This will do that, because part of guided pathways, and one of the things that we've been discussing at IVC, and I'm certain at Saddleback too, because it's a big part of it, is a first semester, or possibly a first-year experience, but certainly a first semester experience based on your meta major or whatever that we decide to call it, interest cluster. A student would be geared toward the correct math. I mean, it's a different math path if you're going to the social sciences versus the STEM or art, so, and writing as well, getting that done early, and also not letting students get lost in the remediation hole.
Okay, I think I still have the floor, and I'll yield it to Saddleback's Academic Senate President.
Thank you, President Shabal. Just to address the issue with the 5% transferring, part of that relates to what Trustee Prendergast had said earlier about the application process. One of the defaults that comes up is intends to transfer, where the student may not know what they're clicking on, so a lot of them, that is what gets selected, even though that's not really why they're there. So that number is unfortunately skewed, and hopefully with the reworking of that, that will be one of the things that gets clarified.
Okay, well, so if that's not, if they're clicking on this inadvertently or incorrectly, not inadvertently, incorrectly is what you're saying, then what are they, what are they intending to do? What are the other options that they would have selected if not transferred? How many others?
You're basically asking why a student comes to a community college.
Yeah.
And we all know that there's.
So you're saying a lot of these, a lot of students are clicking, intend to transfer incorrectly, they don't wish to transfer?
That's correct, yes. They're taking, like, I'll use my own program, for example, for geographic information systems. They want to take a single class in GIS to help them with their employment skills, not realizing that that actually mattered, what they clicked when they selected it, and so the default of intent to transfer, it's not even on their radar of like, I don't really care, I just want to get in, get through this page of applying so I can take that one class.
So what do we think, okay, if we said 95% are not transferring who intend to transfer, what is the number then?
That's not my answer.
May I address this?
Sure.
The 95% is not based on the CCC Apply student self-reported opinion. This is based on behavioral data, and that addresses also what Trustee Wright said, or Lang, I forgot. That's why we have these six-year periods. We give students six-year time to show behavioral intent. We're not asking them if you want to transfer, you need to show us over six-year a behavioral intent to transfer. And only if you've shown that behavioral intent, then we count you in that cohort.
So the number is correct?
The number is correct.
Okay.
So 5% of those who show behavioral intent. However, two and a half years, you will see a large uptick. So a lot of students start transferring at two and a half years and three and 3.4 years. So that's where we see a huge increase, but the exact cutoff of two years is 5%.
And if I can, it's important, it doesn't say I intend to transfer in two years. It says I intend to transfer. I may intend to transfer, but I can only take two classes a year, a semester. So I intend to transfer, but saying I intend to transfer and not transfer in two years does not mean failure. Doesn't mean failure on our part or on a student's part, it's just it's their schedule. It's what they're able to do. So I don't think.
But we presented it as a negative data point. I mean, the way I interpreted it.
Well, it is.
More negative than positive. I know what you're saying, and I agree with you, is it's not necessarily.
I mean, it goes to the same point as when they were asking us to show completion rate, and so many students transfer but don't finish the AA. And that wasn't being counted and credited. So there's all sorts of, you know, parameters there, and so I don't want to get too hung up on that data as far as what the overall picture of what these pathways can do for a student from application to completion.
Just to give you an idea, nationally, on average, a full, it takes 3.9 years for a full-time student to obtain an AA degree. This is a national number. Full-time, yes.
That's the, it's an average or median or?
It's an average, a national average, 3.9 years in close to six years for part-time students.
Okay. Thank you for that. Trustee Lang.
Yes, thank you. I think I heard one of you, I think it might have been you, that indicated this is a state-funded program, guided pathways, and so with that, I have to believe that there are certain, I don't know, metrics that they have provided that you need to improve in order to continue to receive funding, or how does that work?
Right, so fortunately, since I worked with the CalPAS system where this data is housed, we found out they're developing a supply and demand model, and they're looking at interventions, and so we're going to be lucky here in the district to be one of the people who supply those interventions. So for example, if you increase your remediation, how did that change your supply and demand curve? So, and we had a voice there that we thought they needed more college input on those, on those inputs, and they weren't getting it, so we were selected as somebody to provide input. So those interventions that we're doing, dual enrollment, remediation, counseling, our high school partnerships will all hopefully be included in those interventions, and then the chancellor will look at those, as well as they, that's their guided pathways tool. They also have the strong workforce tool that they're still looking at, mostly enrollments. There's outcomes, but enrollments are the stronger metric that they're using for funding allocations.
So is it a sort of a carrot and a stick approach? Those institutions that are doing a very good job will get more money, those that aren't doing a good job, or maybe just the opposite?
So it starts out as a, the way the Chancellor's office usually does, it's a percentage allocation, and they take, for strong workforce example, 13% of that allocation will then be a carrot and stick, as you described, where you may have less funding if your outcomes are not good, and I imagine guided pathways will follow that same trajectory.
Thank you. Trustee Witt.
Just a quick question, and I don't know if it really matters, but when you said it was 3.9 years, that's a long time for the two years. So I'm thinking, would it matter to us, the state, to find out the why? I mean, is it non-academic barriers? Is it academic barriers? Don't they know what they want to do? Does, would it matter if we found out the cause, and then we could help?
Well, from the workshops and seminars on guided pathways the past several months, the theme is that students are taking too many credits, and we need to focus. So guided pathways is not a new initiative, it's a movement. Students are taking too long, and in fact, if you'd like to learn more about guided pathways and maybe not have time to read the book, there is a good podcast that the state chancellor's office just released. Chancellor Oakley, Eloy Oakley, interviews Davis Jenkins from Columbia University, one of the co-authors, and it's very nice you listen to it. It comes also with a transcript. So if you Google California Community Colleges guided pathways podcast, that takes you there. There are two of them, it's a series, and I listened several times to two of them, but it's nice interviews, and they answer all the questions, and the theme is that students are taking too long, they're spending too much money, they're taking too many credits. They want, at Bakersfield College, their last seminar on guided pathways, they had, in fact, in conjunction with IVC and Mount SAC in May, the slogan was no more, no more than 60 credits in no longer than three years. We're going to get there, it'll take many, many years, but that's what they're pushing for. The state now is saying, we're tired of spending all this money of students not sure of what they want and taking, it's like cafeteria style, taking courses here and there and ending up with over 100 credits when they really need 60 to transfer as a junior to a four-year university.
Just to follow up, the Chancellor's office data is very strong and very clear that the reason why folks aren't finishing in two years is because they're not ready for college-level classes. It's very clear, it trumps all of the other data, and that's why we have to take ownership to not just hope our high schools are going to change that, but we have to be involved earlier in the process.
And to address remediation, so IVC did that. We, in fact, when I was at IVC, the English faculty worked with the counselors and other members of the college to submit curriculum for the combos pre-Iraq, that is, students who are not ready to take Writing 1 at IVC would take this special Writing 1, that's a combo that comes with all support, all the support needed. a combo that comes with all support, all the support needed. It's, it's a bigger class, but students will succeed, will take the transfer level with all the support they need, even if they're not ready for it. That's guided pathways. Saddleback is doing the same. They submitted their curriculum by the May deadline of this year, and hopefully by fall 2018, we'll be able to offer that special English 1A. An acceleration, accelerated writing at both Saddleback College and IVC is way underway, where we combine two level, and two levels into one, to cut on that time, cut out that time, that extra credits, extra time. And you'll hear it in the podcast, if you listen to it, nowadays, students don't have the time or the money to spare. So it's incumbent upon us, the colleges, to really address it, and, and I believe guided pathways is, is a way to get that resolved.
Well, thanks, Kriema. We'll make sure all trustees have a link to those podcasts. And one final question from student trustee Larson.
Yeah, I'll let you guys in on a little secret. It's very difficult to add a class sometimes. There are things called wait lists, and you show up to a class and all the seats are full. Being a highly motivated student wanting to transfer, I would go to these classes even after the professor would say, hey, we're booked, full, we can't accept you. I would continually keep going to the classes, sitting on the floors and so, so forth, just to, week after week, see the, the population of the students bleed. I think that this is a very important concept that maybe the, the administrators can implement in, in the guided pathway system. But I got in, you know, trouble a few times, but I, I think that's a very key feature that, that we should not overlook.
I appreciate you bringing it up, and I will say that when guided pathways is implemented with, coupled with technology, one can then utilize the data that we get to engage in, like, scheduling and enrollment management, and such a way as to support the classes that students need to complete their path. That's definitely a part of guided pathways.
All right, I want to thank you all for your update. You can, you can tell there's lots of interest in this issue, and we look forward to having an update in the future. All right, we're now on to the consent calendar, and I'd like to ask trustees if they have any polls. Trustee Wright.
5.4 and 5.6. I just have one quick question for both of them.
Okay, 5.4 and 5.6. Trustee Lang, have you, you're, you're good?
Yep.
Okay, trustee Witt.
I also have five, just, just a question, 5.6 and 6.2.
Okay, 5.6 is already polled, so 6.2.
6.2 is not.
Well, 6.2 is not on the consent calendar.
Oh, sorry, 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 I just have a question.
Did you mean another number?
No.
Okay. All right, so is there a motion to, to move the balance of the items?
Some of.
Second.
I'll give it to you, Jim. Motion from trustee Wright and a second, sorry Dave, from trustee Milchiker. Any further, no one knows why we're laughing. It's the electronic voting system here. Any questions on the item? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. We have a unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, and student advisory yes vote. Okay, trustee Wright, 5.4.
Right, my question on 5.4 is I, this is for IVC. I applaud you for the speaker that you have, but I, but my question is, you're having a speaker by the name of Chip Epinosa, PhD, and the topic is managing millennials, which I think is a great topic, but tell me just a little bit about your speaker. What's his qualifications?
Okay, is, is that under 5.6 or?
5.4.
Oh, 5.4, okay, I missed that entirely, I'm sorry. Yes, Chip is a professor at Concordia University, has published four books on the subject. His work spans the millennial in the workplace, all the way to the millennial in the classroom, and each of the books, you know, pertain differently. I've had the opportunity to hear him twice, first with the Irvine Chamber Board, and then I had him at one of my management retreats, and he was very well received.
Great, great. That's, that's it.
All right, is there a motion to move the item? We have a motion from trustee Jay and a second from trustee Milchiker. Any other discussion on 5.4? Let's go ahead and vote. The item is approved by unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, and a student advisory yes vote. Now on to 5.6. Jim Wright, trustee Wright.
5.6 again, deals with Irvine Valley College Agreement for Strong Workforce Partner, Vertical Sector Leader, Biotechnology Services, Daniel Michael. Tell me a little bit about that, Daniel Michael. Is he, is he a teacher or a professor or in the?
And thank you very much for the question, and then there's been an additional question on this topic, so I have poised over in the corner of the room my vice president, Chris McDonald, because he'll be able to give you the detail on it.
Thank you, thank you.
Good afternoon. I can give some detail. As part of the Strong Workforce Program, Irvine Valley College was awarded through the LAORCRC consortia about $482,000 that the board approved back on May 15th. Now, to lead the biotech segment, there, of the nine colleges, four colleges got together with faculty members, and they reviewed applications for this contract. So the specific answer to your question, since I wasn't part of the interview process, so I believe they had seven or eight applicants that they reviewed, so we had eight faculty members, we had a couple administrators, one of our own deans as part of the process. But in order to give a, a background, I don't have a detailed background. I know the person is from north somewhere, and they're involved in the biotech sector, and they've worked with the sector navigator in the past, but I don't have a full details for you at this time. It could, we could find additional information for you.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Lang.
Yes, that, that's kind of the part that seemed odd to me, that we were hiring a consultant out of San Francisco, adding a travel allowance to it, and it was just to, to work with basically four community colleges in our area, in the Orange County area. And I, I guess I was just surprised that we couldn't find somebody qualified, you know, within this geographic area to, to serve in this role.
I definitely appreciate, appreciate the question, and I, I would probably ask the same question myself. But the, not being, again, not being directly part of the process, when we have these new business development, things going on with strong workforce, if we're reviewing applicants, the person who is most connected at times to, in this particular case, the biotech industry, regardless of where they are, and if it's an individual who, and again, I can't speak necessarily for this one, but if it's an individual that is connected to the industry and understands the community college processes, meaning they've been in the system, they've worked with a sector navigator or deputy sector navigator, those are the folks that are going to rise to the, to the top, because they've got the connections, irrespective of where they're from.
Okay, trustee Witt.
Yes, Chris, I'm, I'm curious about the, the money. We have four colleges, and we're, Saddleback is not to exceed, or excuse me, IVC is not to exceed, or the district is not to exceed $100,000 for the year. Are we doing the entire amount, giving the entire amount, or is San Diego Canyon and Santa Ana Plurton also contributing to this?
Okay, so let me provide just a brief context. Of the $200 million for strong workforce, 5% was taken off the top, 60% was distributed to the colleges, and 40% was left to the regions. So the money we're talking about is out of the 40%. The Los Angeles, Orange County region receive money.
Got it.
And it's that regional money, we're just sort of the fiscal pass-through for that regional money.
I didn't see that. Makes sense. Good.
Okay, any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to move the item. A motion from trustee Milchiker and a second from trustee Witt. Any further questions or discussion? Let's go ahead and vote on the item. We have a unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, and student advisory yes vote. All right, we are now on to our general action items, and first one is 6.2, where we will conduct a public hearing. I'm sorry, 6.1, correction. We are at 6.1. We are now at board item 6.1, certification of an addendum to the program, environmental impact report for the 2011 Saddleback College Facilities Master Plan and the 2011 Irvine Valley College Facilities Master Plan pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. Before we have that public hearing, our interim chancellor will provide an introduction.
The agenda item pertains to a public hearing to consider the certification and addendum to the program environmental impact report as stated on the agenda item. Public notices have invited all interested parties to, persons to attend this public hearing and express opinions about the ATAS Building Project for Saddleback College and related SEQA compliance.
Does the board have any questions to the staff or our consultants that are here to assist with their understanding of this matter? Seeing none. Board item 6.1, public hearing on the matter at hand is now open, and comments are not to exceed five minutes. All right, seeing no, no comments, the public hearing is now closed. Is there any further discussion on this matter by the board of trustees? 6.1 is concluded. Item 6.2, adopted resolution number 17-20, certification of an addendum to the program environmental impact report for the 2011 Saddleback College Facilities Master Plan and 2011 Irvine Valley College Facilities Master Plan pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, otherwise known as SEQA. I will entertain a motion and a second to move this item. We have a motion from trustee Milchiker, and a second from trustee Lang, and a question from trustee Witt.
My question, my question was, is, was there a need to discuss this with faculty at all?
Probably not. So this is the public hearing on the SEQA, but we'll be talking about, remember, we talked about this project last month?
Mm-hmm.
And then we'll be talking about it again in item 6.3.
Okay.
Which will be the revision to the building and the recommendation of option three.
Okay.
All right, let's go ahead and vote on the item. 6.2 is approved by unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Now that, that an addendum to the EIR is certified, we may address the revision of the 36,600 square foot renovation project to a new 45,000 square foot building. This is item 6.3, Saddleback College Advanced Technology and Applied Science ATAS renovation. Revision of the ATAS renovation project to the ATAS Building Project. Does the board have any questions to staff or our consultants to assist with the understanding of this matter?
Chancellor does.
I will yield to the chancellor.
So I was asking Brandy Delena to come up and just give a recap of item 6.3. It's a really important item, and it also will speak to trustee Witt's question.
Okay, a quick recap. Back in November, we started looking at the possibility of going from a renovated building to a new building. We met with faculty, that was the first step that we took, and they supported completely the investigation of that. We came to the board, and they approved that investigation. And then we met with faculty two more times to talk about what the possibilities of this would entail, including how the programs would change, how, how programs would go from how they are now to where they would grow, which would be about a 12 and 1/2% growth over 15 years. So there were those meetings, and then we did hold one final meeting. There was, faculty expressed concern about the, the way we were, we were moving forward, and so we went back again for more clarification. So we have actually had three to four different meetings with faculty on this, the process of modifying this from renovation to new building.
Brandy, can I ask you, when you say you met with the faculty, were you talking about the majority of faculty? I mean, this is huge, this is a huge project, and I'm very sensitive to this, and I want the best for our students, so if this makes it the best, but also I believe that we are a great college because of our faculty. So if you have faculty who are happy, students are happy. So I just wanted to know if, if, let's say 60%, 75% of the faculty are on board on this?
I, I can't answer that because I don't know the number of faculty that are in that division. However, I can tell you that the meetings-
Yeah, if I can interject, Kathy Worley is in the audience. I know that Dean Tang isn't, so can I ask the VPI also to speak on that? We had attendance at that meeting, both by Carol Hilton, Dean Tony Tang, and VPI Kathy Worley, and I wanted to make sure that that question is answered appropriate by the instructional side, please.
Thank you, Kathy Worley. The entire division was invited to these meetings. We did get a majority of department chairs. I think there were different ones that were missing at both of the meetings that we had, or three of the meetings that we had, at different times based on when we were offering them. So I would say probably more than 60% of the full-time faculty, I don't know that we had many part-time faculty, in fact, we probably didn't. We had the classified employees that work in the office, some of the lab classified employees. It was a good turnout for a division meeting at each of the meetings.
Thank you.
Trustee Wright.
I, I noticed that you're going to, your square footage is going to go up quite, about 8,400 square feet. Now, is this including auto mechanics, or are they just going to stay where they're at?
For this phase of the construction, they would stay where they're at. The automotive program was preferring the lab be where it is, and they've got some classroom space, so for the time being, they stay where they are. But we're looking at this as possibly a two-phase development plan. The first phase is to get a big, kind of a flexible CTE building in place where we can start moving the programs in that need to be housed out of the villages. We've got a number of the programs that are already housed in BGS, so they were not in the original move for consideration. But at the moment, we have more programs to move than we had space even planned for. The culinary arts program had never been envisioned to be in that building, they're envisioned to be in the Gateway Building, as an example. Advanced manufacturing had not been intended to really go into this building as a renovation, but we find that they've moved back onto campus originally from ATEP, and then they were more recently at UCI. So they're back on campus in, in very inadequate facilities. So the idea is to get going on the building itself as quickly as possible, make it as flexible as possible, looking at, you know, some large roll-up doors so that you can have deliveries and large equipment, but also to then work through the master planning process. We're going to be undergoing education and facilities master plan for the next 20 years. And it's very possible we're going to need to kind of rethink some of these things, and it can be happening in tandem with what's already been planned for the new facility.
I know that the auto mechanics people are very happy with where they're at, so they, I've, I've been told that, so.
But in the master plan, remember that we've got maintenance and operations that was supposed to go into that facility, so that's one of the things that as a college we need to work through.
All right.
Can I just add something? So I just wanted to remind the board that last time we had a presentation, remember CM was there, and Brandy, and Tony Tang? And so they went over sort of all the different options and sort of what was going to be in each option. So this is now option three, that we said we were going to explore the feasibility of. The SEQA is, the SEQA environmental public hearing was on option three. And what this would be doing would be building a 45,000 square foot in a different location other than the existing footprint where the ATAS Building is, on the lower campus, on a flat space where- a flat space where the soil issues would not be an issue. And this would then take us to approve to the next step. Basic aid funds have already been allocated for a portion of this budget. That means that the college and additional funding will be requested during the upcoming basic aid cycle, for the difference, and that's outlined in the status. So, we're asking that, based on the estimated project budget of $47 million, that we can move forward at the next steps.
Yeah, I think that's correct, Deborah. I think what, no, I understand that. I think what Trustee Witt was getting to is that, the question about faculty support, I think that I'm getting the assurances from you and from Brandy, Kathy Worley, that the faculty is in overwhelming support of this. And so, subsequent to this meeting, we're not going to hear any objections from faculty for the number three, for Plan Number Three to move forward. Is that, that's correct, right?
The only thing that we're going to grumble about is being down in the villages now for an extended period of time, and we're doing the best that we can to try to accommodate that.
Okay. Trustee Milchiker.
Yeah. My question was, you answered some of it, but I know that the site of the new ATAS building will be in a different location. We're planning to have it, as you're saying, on the same area of the campus, but in an area that has a flat location with soils that won't be compressible or won't sink like where the building is right now. So, that has to be done first. So, my question is, what about the master plan, the new master plan that has to be built? Shouldn't this be considered to be done first so we really have a well-thought-out plan of where this building will be and it makes sense, both pedagogically and architecturally, where they put the new building? And also, faculty will agree that's a good location for the building as well, so.
So, yeah, we have identified what would be the best spot for this, and it is going to be in the lower level of the campus. Do you know where the tennis courts are?
Yeah.
It's in that location.
Okay.
And if you have any questions, Brandy could fill you in on a little more about why that was chosen.
Okay.
Do you want to fill them in on why that, you know, it's proximate to utilities, for instance, and obviously, the geotechnical reasons?
So, how does it, I know that Irvine Valley College had the luxury of creating certain disciplines in their college campus, where they have a discipline for humanities and for the sciences and for the arts. Saddleback was built in 1968, so we didn't really have that luxury. But, what is the reason for the building to be in that location? Certainly, a fabulous reason is it's a flat location. The soils will not be of the great concern it is of the current ATAS building, so the building won't sink. So, what are the reasons pedagogically, that it's going to be in that area as well as, as- As architecturally and-
But that's an instructional question.
Well, let's explain the facilities reasons first.
We did have discussions about this, and you heard Kathy Worley mention earlier that the growth of the task program will be in two phases, with this being the first phase, while the second phase is still in the BGS building and the Student Services Center, some in the village, and then the auto tech program is still down there. So, Phase One, being located at the tennis courts, will allow for expansion of a second building in the future. There'd be plenty of room in that spot for Phase Two, which would allow us then to develop that quad sense feeling that you were talking about, that IVC has the pleasure of having.
So, they're removing the tennis courts, there won't be tennis courts anymore, is-
They'll be removed and relocated.
Okay, that's good, because we still teach tennis here, I know.
What we're hearing about the tennis courts is that the college had intentions to improve them in the near future, at any rate, and this will allow for that improvement to occur sooner than later.
Okay, so then, while the building is being created, will tennis be taught off-campus in a different location?
It may be, in the same way that we're having the football games occur off-campus during the time of the stadium construction, the tennis courts might also be in that shape. Now, when we go into criteria, which would be our first phase, where we're defining the program and defining more clearly some of these questions, we'll identify the location for the tennis court, the final location for it, and then we'll better understand how the tennis program will be impacted, and certainly, PE will be involved in those conversations.
It would be good to have the PE program to be, as you're saying, in an area that is somewhat adjacent to the other PE programs, so that would be good.
Yeah, that would be great.
But has the college community looked at this location and agreed that this is a good place to put the new ATAS building?
There isn't a lot of discussion in the college community about that, because there are more factors than just, the curriculum is inside the walls. The factor of the building and the building costs are associated with, here's an example, how it sits in relationship to the central plant. If we have the central plant, and that's where all the utilities stem from. So, here's the central plant, and here's a building location, and there's this length between here and here. Another place to put that building might be over here. And what happens with that, then, is those utility costs just doubled or tripled. And so, then we can't meet the curriculum needs on the building. So, there's a lot of factors that are involved in determining where a building would be located, including the growth factor that we just talked about, relative to the future Phase Two, and thinking about, how will that fit in?
Yeah, you're right. That's why a master plan for, the master plan for facilities is so important, so that we don't start just putting buildings any odd place, just because we have place there, you know?
A very good point.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think our acting president of Saddleback College has a comment or question?
Thank you. I met with the dean of the kinesiology and athletics, as well as both chairs of kinesiology and athletics this week with faculty, and we went over the plan for moving the tennis courts. We do have a list of questions from them. They were supportive of the, they understood the need, especially as it relates to the physical plant and the facilities, and, but, we're going to have follow-up meetings with them, and they're very excited about the possibility. They understand that it might result in a temporary relocation of the tennis program off-site, similar to what we're doing for football. And they were overall very supportive and complimentary to the fact that they were included in these discussions, because they, I explained to them, the district basically, when it comes to facility placement, has the right to make these decisions. We're not doing it in a vacuum, but we're doing it to try to do what's best for all the programs. And then, both vice presidents of instruction and administrative services and I met with the faculty in, for the task building, and so, that was just, let's see, that was Friday. And, the majority of the faculty chairs were there, along with the other members, and the same reaction was, of course, they've already moved down to the village, and we firmed up with them where the building was going to go, and there seems to be total support, just, you know, the sooner it's done, the better, is what everyone would like to see.
Okay, that sounds, that sounds great. I think it would have been kind of rude to just tear out their tennis courts and not tell them that they're being torn out.
Of course, that's exactly why, yeah.
So, I appreciate you meeting with them.
And I think as soon as, within a very short amount of time that that decision was made, I was informed, and we immediately met with the faculty so that they knew what was going on. We felt the same way.
Well, as someone who has a daughter who plays college tennis, I'm really glad to hear that. I didn't realize they were going to get torn up this soon. Okay? All right. I think we've finished discussion, and I entertain a motion to approve 6.3. Motion from Trustee Jay and a second from Trustee Wright. I doubt we have any further questions, seeing that we do not. Let's go ahead and vote on the item. We might be missing a vote somewhere. It is a unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, and a student advisory yes vote. Now that the board has approved the revision of the ATAS renovation project to the ATAS building project, we may address a resolution to use the design-build-delivery method for the ATAS building. This is Item 6.4, Saddleback College Advanced Technology and Applied Science ATAS Building, Adopting Resolution 17-21 Design-Bill-Delivery Method. Does the board have any questions to staff or our consultants in the room, who I don't know that we've even identified, to assist with their understanding of this matter? Okay? Seeing no questions, I have a motion from Trustee Lang and a second from Trustee Wright to approve the item. Any other questions or any questions at all? All right. Let's go ahead and vote on the item. We have a five-to-one, five yes votes, one abstention, one trustee absent, and a student advisory yes vote. 6.4 is concluded. We will now proceed with the remainder of the general action items. All right. We're now on to 6.5, ATEP Site Utilities and Infrastructure Phase One Project.
All right. So, this item, just to remind you, similarly to other easements related to utilities at the ATEP site, we're required to declare our intention to enter into an agreement with Pac Bell Telephone Company, doing business as AT&amp;T, for a grant of easement for ATEP Site Utilities and Infrastructure Phase One Project, and to announce that we are going to conduct a public hearing next month. So, how that works is we basically recommend adopting a resolution to declare our intention this month, and then we have a public hearing next month.
Thank you for that. And with that, we have a motion from Trustee Lang and a second from Trustee Jay to approve 6.5. Any questions? Don't see any. Let's go ahead and vote. I think one of, someone needs to vote. All right. We have a unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, student advisory yes vote. 6.6, Adopting Resolution 17-17, which deals with the GAN limit. Do I have a motion? I have a motion on the floor from Trustee Lang, and a second from Trustee Wright to approve the item. And we have a comment or clarification from Kim McCord.
Yeah, just to remind you that this dates back to 1979, and is intended to put a cap on how expenses grow for publicly funded entities. So, each year, we calculate the change in our limit, which is now up to $262 million, but we're well below that with our property taxes and state aid of only $205 million, so we're well within the limit.
All right. Thank you very much for that. We will now, any other questions? Okay, let's go ahead and vote on 6.6. We have a six-to-zero trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, and student advisory yes vote. 6.7, Board Policy Revisions. We have a motion from Trustee Wright and a second from Trustee Lang to approve the item, items. Any questions on the revisions? Okay. Let's go ahead and vote on the item. We have unanimous trustee yes vote, a trustee absent, and student advisory yes vote. 6.8, Furniture and Fixtures Applications, Agreement with Kruger International. Do we have a motion? We have a motion from Trustee Lang and a second from Trustee Witt. Any questions? Okay. Let's go ahead and vote. We have a unanimous trustee yes vote, trustee absent, and a student advisory yes vote. We're on to 6.9, which also deals with furniture and fixtures. Is there a motion on the floor? A motion from Trustee Lang and a second from Trustee Wright. I see no questions. Let's go ahead and vote on 6.9. A unanimous trustee yes vote, trustee absent, and student advisory yes vote. 6.10, Another Furniture and Fixtures Item. Motion from Trustee Lang and a second from Trustee Witt. Any questions? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. On a roll. Okay. Unanimous trustee yes vote, trustee absent, and student advisory yes vote. 6.11, Academic Personnel Actions. Is there a motion on the floor? Motion from Trustee Wright. Is there a second? I have a second from Trustee Lang. Any questions? Seeing none. Let's go ahead and vote. A six-to-zero trustee yes vote, trustee absent, and student advisory yes vote. 6.12, Classified Personnel Actions. Motion from Trustee Witt. Any second? In waiting, coming? Do we have a second? Second from Trustee Milchiker. Any questions? We do not. Let's go ahead and vote. Again, a six-to-zero trustee yes vote, trustee absent, and student advisory yes vote. 6.13, Deals with Classified Employee Position Layoff, Adopting a Resolution. Motion from Trustee Lang and a second from Trustee Jay. Any questions on 6.13? Seeing none. Let's go ahead and vote. A unanimous trustee yes vote and student advisory yes vote and one trustee absent. 6.14, Saddleback, I mean, no, the South Orange County Community College District and Faculty Association Initial Proposal for Implementation of SB 1379. Motion from Trustee Witt and a second from Trustee Jay. Do we have any questions? We do not?
I thought I'd just clarify what this is. What this is, is a joint initial proposal for, at the same time, for both the district as well as the district's faculty association. And, as part of SB Senate Bill 1379, we are required to negotiate part-time faculty rehire rights, and what this does is that we're going to work on that next, together. And, this is an exhibit for review and study, and we're going to be sending a hearing for this for August.
Thank you for that clarification. Any questions after that clarification? Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. And 6.14 is approved with unanimous trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, and a student advisory yes vote. Before proceeding to reports, I will ask one of my colleagues to move to extend the meeting, perhaps to 9:15. Motion from Trustee Lang and a second from, I think that was Trustee Milchiker, to extend the meeting to 9:15. Do you need a second to get that in there, Joyce? All right. Thank you very much. Motion from Trustee Lang, second from, well, that's okay. Trustee Jay, let's go ahead and vote on the item. And the meeting is extended unanimously to 9:15 PM and student advisory concurrence. We're now on to 7.0, Reports. Staff Response to Public Comments from the Previous Board Meeting. Basic Aid Report. Facilities Plan Status Report. All right. Now, we'll now move on to our lone representative of-
Way down here at the end of the table. I think it's something I said, now that I'm back on Senate. I will be brief. I look forward to working with Acting President Whitaker this fall. We've met already and spoke a couple of times, and so I think it'll be very positive for the college. Trustee Milchiker already spoke on the upcoming Professional Development Week, so she took a lot of my thunder away from that. I look forward to seeing all of you on campus at various events during the week. For those who have attended the President's Breakfast in the past, you'll be happy to know that I'm presenting again. And this time, I'll manage to work in photos from field research in Tanzania, Costa Rica, and Iowa into my presentation on the State of the Academic Senate, and I look forward to seeing you there. Thank you.
Thank you. And I see that this faculty association president is not here. Will someone tell him that I've read into the record a letter from a graduate of Saddleback College praising his work as a coach? All right, very good. Okay. So, now we have Vice Chancellor of Technology and, what's your full title?
Technology and Learning Services.
Technology, I want to say Instructional Services, kind of similar, but Learning Services.
In recent months, we've seen an increase in the number, variety, and sophistication of attempts to penetrate and compromise some of our computer systems. So, I thought I would briefly tell you some of the things we're doing to keep you safe. First is, we've been using industry-standard firewalls. That's what sits between us and the outside internet world. We recently upgraded those to a best-of-breed, the newest version of that. Second, when we noticed that our anti-malware programs were not functioning as they used to, we switched to a different- to, we switched to a different vendor that has much better capabilities. Now, if someone sends you anything that has a link in it, and you click on that link in an email, it will spawn what's called a sandbox and conduct a series of very rapid tests on that link to see if it's safe before it allows you to go to it, for example. Another thing is, we use anomaly detection. We have so many servers, and everything on those servers are logged, but the events are far too voluminous for any human being to monitor. So we use artificial intelligence appliances to do that, and we're looking to expand that service. Recently, there was an attempt to actually take some money from the district. It was thanks to an alert employee that was foiled. But what we've done is to institute two-factor authentication for the ERP that involves a lot of the monetary payments. So you're probably familiar with that, where they text you a code on your phone when you're using? So we're increasing the security where payments are involved.
So Bob, let me just interrupt you. So when you take some money, you mean to hack into our electronic banking system?
Yes. The ERP is, typically has, the Enterprise Resource Planning System typically has mechanisms for people to get paid. And in this case, what people did was to come into the system and attempt to submit electronic direct deposit change forms for employees. These, not a penny was stolen, it was noticed, it was halted, but because of that, we've instituted some additional security where finances are involved. Recently, we've conducted a network audit. We gained the service of a leading security firm. It's well-staffed with ex-LAPD cybercrime detectives, folks from the FBI cybercrime division. They have crawled through our systems and done an end-to-end audit and given us recommendations. It's better to have the good hackers get into your system than the bad hackers, so we can remediate that. And in doing so, they've made some recommendations to us. So one thing is, they, they recommend that we expand our anomaly detection that we're already using. We have been trying an internal network monitoring tool. It's recommended that that be deployed permanently. And lastly, it's recommended, because we've had some phishing incidents where people will inadvertently yield their credentials to hackers, that we institute an enterprise-wide security awareness training program. So those are the things we're doing, and some of the changes that we have planned.
Thank you for that report. And now we have our executive director of human resources.
Yes, good evening. Let me tell you, I did do a written report for you, so you have it in your books. The concentration that we're doing right now in human resources has to do with onboarding new faculty, so we're involved in lots of activities with that. We will be in August doing EEO training, as well as training on STIRS for new faculty, and I hope to see you at some of these events. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Acting vice chancellor of business services.
Yeah, business services is working really hard right now on our fiscal year-end close, so we're getting everything booked in the correct year, so we can get the books closed, and then we'll have our beginning balances to finish our FOD budget in preparation for the workshop in September.
Thank you. IVC, Classified Senate.
Right now, we're just trying to get ready for the upcoming year, so we are making our committee appointments, and we're going to have a retreat coming up in about a week and a half, so that's all.
That was a nice report. And batting cleanup. Saddleback College, Classified Senate.
Okay, mine short as well. The Saddleback College Classified Senate Exec Board started their new term on July 1st. This is my second and final year as president, and we will be having our executive team retreat on July 28th.
Well, thank you very much. It looks like we didn't need the extension. We finished at 9:00 PM, and I wish everyone a good evening. Thank you very much.